Good evening, everyone. Let the January 2021 Brookhaven Borough Council Workshop meeting come to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you all. Mr. Wilwood, could you give us a roll call, please? All right, you ready? Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Heller.
Present.
Mrs. Fuchs.
Present.
Mrs. Heller.
Here.
Mayor Leslie.
Present.
Mr. Vasquez.
Here.
Mr. Gilroy.
Present.
Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Ms. Wiki.
Here.
Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Is Joan on?
Mrs. Boyle is on.
Okay. And Mr. Wilwood, I'm here. Everybody present.
Thank you, sir. I have two executive meetings to announce. Council met in executive session on Sunday, 1:10, 21, 11 o'clock a.m. to 12:30 a.m. The subject was personnel. Council will meet directly after tonight's council workshop. And the subject again will be personnel. We'll move into the public discussion. Is there anyone for a public discussion? Please unmute yourself. Public discussion going once, going twice? No one for public discussion? That's closed. Mr. Wills, give us the solicitor's report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and everyone. I forwarded the solicitor's report to the Borough Municipal Building earlier today. It is on file. I will run through a few highlights. Number one concerns the Zoor Street subdivision there that we have going on. We've just recently received the executed copy of the recorded plan back from the Delaware County Courthouse. So I have begun drafting a developer's agreement and a municipal security agreement. Again, this is basically just a two-lot subdivision for two detached, single-family homes. Second issue on my agenda is Officer Kyler. Again, I have prepared a resolution for Borough Council's consideration at next Monday evening's meeting, granting Officer Kyler a service-connected disability pension. Earlier today, I did speak and touch base with the Borough's insurance broker, Mr. Patrick Larkin, regarding other workers' comp issues and heart and lung issues surrounding this officer. And I believe we have tentatively reached a global settlement concerning all those issues. Again, a number of these issues are actually being handled again by the workers' comp carrier. So the Borough may not be precisely and directly involved, but I have great faith in the recommendations of Mr. Larkin. He's somebody that's been involved in this business for over 30 years and brings a wealth of experience. Third issue concerns Pandu Properties. That is basically the eight-lot subdivision over there off West Brookhaven Road. Again, I have received the deed of dedication on the open space lot number eight. That will be recorded up at the Delaware County Courthouse very shortly. And I am working with the Borough engineer to assist and coordinate with the developer, the final regrading and restoration of that lot that has been dedicated to the Borough. And expect that to be completed once the weather breaks. Other issues concern the lot line relocation plan at 4830 and 4832 Greenwood Avenue. This is a very minor relocation plan where the homeowner is basically tweeting or simply moving the lot line over, adjusting both lots so that they're in compliance with the zoning ordinance. The Borough Planning Commission will be meeting to review this on February the 16th. I will be at that meeting. And I suspect the representative for Mr. Catania's office will also be present at that meeting. Next issue I'd bring the Borough Council's attention concerns the various tax assessment appeals the Borough has received for 2021. At this point, I am monitoring 10 different property tax assessment appeal cases filed for 2021. They concern both commercial and residential properties. In a normal year, 10 would probably be considered an inordinate amount of tax assessment appeal cases. But as we all know, beginning January 1st of 2021, all commercial, residential, and industrial properties in Delaware County have all been reassessed. And so therefore, given the fact that all 2,500 parcels in Brookhaven Borough have been reassessed, the fact that we have 10 property tax assessment appeals is really not a significant amount by any stretch. Now, the deadline to file a property tax assessment appeal for 2021 has been extended by court order until January 31st of this year. So it is possible the Borough may receive some additional tax assessment appeal cases this week. And again, I will keep Borough Council apprised of that particular situation. Next on my agenda, I recently completed a lease addendum agreement between the Borough and State Representative Leanne Kruger for leased space that she maintains in the Borough Municipal Complex. We certainly think that is a win-win for the Borough and also for the residents that if they have state questions or issues, that we have our state representative on staff right here in the Borough at the Borough Municipal Complex for the convenience of all the taxpayers. And finally, on my agenda, I have recently been involved with the mayor and the police committee to discuss some contract proposals with the FOP. And I have recently drafted and prepared revised proposals for a new collective bargaining agreement between the Borough and the FOP. And will certainly be assisting the mayor and the police committee in those negotiations as we move forward. And certainly the intention of the Borough, and I also believe it's the intention of the FOP, to try to bring this matter to conclusion. This has basically been a matter that's been somewhat drawn out now. We have not had a collective bargaining agreement since December the 31st of 2019. So we're approximately 13 months of lapse now. So I think it's critical on both parties' part that, again, we collectively bargain in good faith and certainly be prepared to compromise and negotiate in good faith with the expectation that we will be able to reach in the not-too-distant future a new collective bargaining agreement. And with that, Mr. President, that is my report.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor.
Yes, I just have two things this evening on my agenda. I just wanted to congratulate Chief Montella and his wife Patty on their new grandson. They had a baby boy over the weekend and his son Rob and Diane, and hope everything went well with them. And the other... You're welcome. The second thing on my agenda is I had the pleasure yesterday, Sunday, January 24th, to swearing in James Kelso as our new part-time police officer. And we welcome him and wish him luck. And he starts training, I believe, this week. That's the end of my report.
Welcome aboard and congrats again, Chief. Chief Montella.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll have my regular report for the council meeting and the COVID-19 updates for the council this week.
The beginning.
On the report. And also happy to announce we had 60 personnel received their first round of the COVID vaccine. Fire EMS personnel of those 60, 10 of them were employees on the EMS side. And we had six personnel refuse the shot. So we had 60 total received the first shot. We'll be receiving our second shots beginning this week and the next two weeks.
No issues with it?
So far, none of our people had any complaints on it, just the normal sore arm like getting the flu shot.
Great.
And that should be it for me, Mr. President. Could I also, I know you guys have another meeting. Could I set up a meeting with our fire committee? Maybe early February, if they could pick some dates, early February, maybe the 3rd or 4th or 10th or 11th to meet with us to just have a general first meeting for the new year here.
You got that. I can set that up, chief.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Chief Zebby, do you have a report? It says it's basically optional on the agenda.
No report. You usually save the reports for the council meeting. But it's going to touch base with, because COVID shots have begun, our officers started getting scheduled and have received their shots starting last week. So far, like Chief Montella said, just a punch in the arm feeling, that's about it. Lasted a couple of days, no big deal. As we got our shots, we got scheduled for our second shots. Mine's the first week in February for a second shot. Also, we have new radios on order from the county. They're through a grant or funding that was acquired through the county to update our radio systems because the old ones were antiquated and aging. I believe the fire company as well is probably eligible for a new radio system for portable radios. So we're waiting our turn to get ours. And lastly, I want to remind residents to always lock their car doors. We had just last night some vehicles get broken into. No part of the community is immune. Last night's incident had a stolen vehicle involved that was basically frog hopping between communities and just picking a random street. And a group of young persons were going around and getting into cars that were left unlocked. So they were chased away by residents last night. So we weren't able to apprehend, but a few communities are looking for these group of individuals. So just keep your cars locked. And that's all for me.
Thank you, sir. Is my sound off, everyone? I'm hearing myself back. I guess I'll deal with it. I only have a few things. I'll have a full report for next Monday's meeting. Mr. Gavin will be available at next meeting. He could not make tonight due to a scheduling conflict. And a reminder that the Hero Banner Round Four is now open. You can pay in person at Borough Hall. We did have to raise the price to $130 each because we couldn't subsidize the bracket with fundraising. We could not do fundraising last year, mostly due to COVID. We can only accept payment at Borough Hall at the front desk. So the instructions are on the Brookhaven Hometown Hero Facebook page and most of the other Brookhaven Facebook pages. I'm getting a lot of questions about when Borough Hall is going to reopen to rentals or group events. The answer hasn't changed. It's indefinitely closed until council is satisfied that it is safe enough to open, which at this rate might not be for a couple of months, depending on how the vaccine distribution progresses. I also had a question from two residents from Traditions. It's our early 55-plus community. They wanted to know if I could reach out to the Chester County Board of Health to see if they could have their vaccinations administered on-site at Traditions. Then I got an answer back today relatively quick. The answer was a flat no. And also, we are waiting on hearing back from Chesco Board of Health to see if they would like to use Borough Hall as a vaccination center, which we did offer a few weeks ago. If they are going to use it, it's going to be late in the game, probably spring, if at all. And that is all I have for now. Mrs. Fuchs.
Mr. President.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Let me do one thing. I want council to consider, I will be reading in for a vote to the Veterans Committee, two additions next week. Ed Mangaluso, sorry if I screwed your name up, Ed. And Elizabeth Finnegan. So keep that in consideration for next Monday for the Veterans Committee. Sorry, Mrs. Fuchs, go ahead.
That's okay. Thank you. The ordinance committee, as of now, will meet on Thursday, February 18th. And I also wanted to inform council that Sean McCann, who is currently an ordinance committee member, has informed me that he will be resigning from the ordinance committee effective immediately. He has decided to focus on other causes near and dear to him. I will make a motion at the next council meeting to accept his resignation. And I just wanted to add, I know some residents were wondering about the KFC Taco Bell, why they're closed or serving a limited menu or wherever it may be. They are installing new kitchen equipment, which is why this is not normal right now for them. I'm waiting to hear back from one of the inspectors to find out when that work will be finished. So I'll let everyone know, particularly the residents who are concerned about it. That's all my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fuchs. Mr. Gilroy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a report for tonight for the workshop. But I just want to tell you, everyone, Chief Zebby there, thanks. Appreciate the hard work, you know, for the incident I had. And the department really acted real professionally, really took care and even went above and beyond my expectation. And I really appreciate that. I just want to say thanks to the police department. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pappas.
Thank you, Mr. President, but I do not have a report for tonight.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mrs. Heller.
I just have two quick things. The first thing is the REC Board is meeting in person this Thursday, the 28th, at the Borough Hall. And the other thing that I have is that the backstop actually started work two weeks ago, and it is still in progress. So hopefully it'll be done before the baseball season starts this year. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Ms. Wiki. Ms. Wiki's having tech issues. There you go. You're good.
She always does. Okay, I have nothing except the bill. I wanted to bring to your attention the bill this month. If you look at its three pages, and you'll see that under SURE, we do have the Delkor bill. Now, that's the Delkor bill for last year. We pay it in February for last year. So that when you get your tax bill this year, that increase, which there was an increase from Delkor, that will be paid February of 2022. I just wanted to make people aware of that. But those bills are going to be put out in the mail this week. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Baskins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick, few quick things. The Christmas tree collection is still going on. If you haven't got your tree out by now, we're still collecting. Next thing I got is we have found a second seasonal employee. James Loftus is his name. He will be joining the team. And thirdly, we'll be able to start training on our new sewer jetter. We finally were able to hash out a date with the company we purchased it with. We'll be receiving training on that the 2nd of February at 8:00 a.m. And that's all I have. I'll have a full report at the council meeting.
Thank you, sir. You guys are easy on me tonight. Mr. Catania.
I'll break that string. Some of my report and a couple of things I do want to mention. Brookhaven Glen, obviously you're aware the construction started there. We'll have an escrow at least to be considered. I'm reviewing the information. I'll get that information over to Mr. Will so he can prepare the appropriate resolution for next meeting. Delkor asset transfer, the Borough received a letter maybe a month and a half ago at this point asking for council to consider approval or denial of the Act 537. Their planning process for DEP by January 15th, obviously the dates don't work for us. At this point, I think we just kind of let that sit with all that's going on with the PUC and the court cases. I don't think we're prepared to take any action at this time. Pay a small water and sewer grant. This was money that we received in 2018 for work along Brookhaven Road. We opened those bids maybe two or three months ago, worded a contract. That value of that contract was well less than the funds available. I think we had $300 and some thousand dollars available. The contract was under $100,000. So we asked DEC, DCED, if they would consider reallocating that money first to Whitley Road, the storm sewer issue, and we were denied that claim. And then we thought maybe we could ask them to transfer that money to Edgemont Avenue. We have that sewer problem on Edgemont Avenue, Brookhaven Road. And we recently received a response that that is not feasible neither. So we have an awful lot of money sitting on the table that we're looking at some creative ways to not give that back. One of the things we're looking at right now is all the work that's being done on Brookhaven Road involves the Borough main sewer. And we all know that we're responsible for the street laterals in that area. So we're looking at maybe rehabilitating the street laterals in that stretch that's eligible for the funding. So we're looking at feasibility of doing that, get a cost estimate together, and then contact DCED to see if that's acceptable to them. Last month, we heard from a resident on Creek Road about the flooding issues in the meeting with Pima. Mr. Heller wasn't touched with Representative Kruger's office. Yeah, to set up a meeting. It looks like we tentatively had something set up for the first week of March with the representative. Once that's confirmed, I'll advise you of that date. And I think the purpose is just for an understanding of what's going on down there so that the state rep could possibly bring someone from Pima down to meet with the residents. I said last month that the phone call was a little disjointed. It was very, very difficult to follow. And I don't believe that any of the residents got any beneficial information out of it. So I believe if we get the right person to come down here, maybe we'll get some help for those residents. Next up is the 2021 street resurfacing. Starting to be that time where we start putting together a street list. We'll be in touch with Dave Evans on what streets he feels need to be repaved. We'll get that list to council. If council has any streets that they feel need to be added to the list, please give them to me. One of the first orders of business is next week we'll have a county resolution for consideration. This is the annual money. I think it's $8,910 you get each year from the county. It's your gas tax coming back to the Borough. So that'll be on the agenda for next week. Point, just to be a bit of information, DCNR has a parks application period that just opened. So if there's anything in any of the parks or recreation that the Borough is considering, I think that is due in April, so we should start thinking about that and coming up with an acceptable project to submit.
What's the amount?
I think, I believe it's up to $250,000. This is a 50% match, though. So every dollar they give us, we got to spend that same amount.
Does that include athletics?
Define athletics.
So you want to put in a... Go ahead, Mrs. Heller.
No, does it include the actual facilities themselves? Because we have to bring them up to par with COVID. If the baseball and softball season's going to start this year, we need to put partitions and the social distancing stuff. So I'm not sure if that's covered under that.
It would be covered, but keep in mind that this money, the grant period closes in April. The announcements won't be until late summer, early fall. This is next year's project.
Now, my question was, would it cover, say, a multi-use sports facility, deck hockey slash basketball in an existing park? That was my question.
Yes, any recreational facility or upgrade or rehab or new is eligible.
All right, Mr. Gil... I don't want to add it, but Mr. Gilroy and I were looking into such a thing. So there you go. Get on it, Mr. Gilroy.
Will that cover lights or no?
It could, yes.
And Mrs. Heller just stole our multi-purpose sport. We'll fight about that.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Leslie, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President. The only thing I got, I want to maybe bring something to the ordinance committee on home oxygen use to notify our first responders and the police. If there was oxygen in there, we could get an ordinance together and assign posted, where it would be an ordinance to have posted on their front door for the first responders going in, firefighters or police.
Great idea.
Luke, since we can't get some kind of ordinance drawn up on oxygen in-home use. That's the end of my report for now. I'll give the rest of the report next week. Thank you.
Great idea, sir. Thank you. We don't have a zoning officer. We don't have Board of Health. That brings us to the second public discussion session. Is there anyone for public discussion? Mr. Dykes, you're speaking, but I can't...
Hi there.
Good evening, Mr. Dykes.
Mr. Catania, question on that...
Name and address. We all know you.
Tom Dykes, 305 West Brookhaven Road.
Follow the rules.
Follow the rules. I'm sorry. Mr. Catania, on the DCNR grant, would that also cover what we had talked about before with extending the drain pipe at Eaton Park under the walking path to the other side? So we have less water pools by the playground?
The direct answer to your question is that would be an eligible cost. Putting a project DCNR for such limited scope is probably not going to score very well.
Right. If we put them all together and stuff like that?
Well, if you're going to do something, if you're going to do something additional in Eaton Park, it may make sense. There are other grant opportunities out there. There's a watershed restoration grant. And one other one then escapes me that would probably be more appropriate for that. And we would probably, instead of just extending a pipe, we might, there's a rain garden out front. We might build an additional rain garden or something that is more a green nature.
Charles, I didn't mean to cut you off, Tom. Charles, wouldn't the Mariner 2 fine grant, whatever you want to call it, $125,000 cover that? To make an existing rain guard actually work, rain garden actually work?
That money is allocated to two projects that we're still trying to hash out exactly where those projects are. They're given by latitude and longitude. And when you plot them, I need to do some more research on exactly what they are. But I guess similar to what we're trying to do with the 2018 sewer and water grant, we could always ask that that be reallocated to a project that meets the criteria and see what kind of response we get. I mean, the fix over there is relatively simple. Just have to do it. And, you know, it's basically extending that pipe down past the path. So it drains on the other side and gets down to the creek. You know, it may move the problem, but it moved the problem to someplace that is less traffic. You know, people aren't walking through that area to get to the playground.
Tom, what spot are you talking to?
That's what we're talking about, that along where the end of, where this, then where the swings are.
Sure, right.
Between the playground and the walking path is where the exit is for the water, the excess water off the rain garden.
Sure.
So it just makes a bigger puddle in the middle of a walking area.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Doing that. And then the other walk, the other one is I talked to Mr. Gilroy about also, and Terry, I've talked to you too, is that same area at Sanson Park where we talked about. As you're going in, it's a huge water trough that stays there for weeks after a rain.
Right along the edge of the tennis court up to the Thomas parking lot?
Yes, there's along that side and also along the third base line of the T-ball field over there. There's water on both sides.
The one I was thinking of, yeah.
Okay, and the one goes between the shed and the tennis courts.
And you have the retention fund behind it. It doesn't seem to be connected, I guess.
Yeah, something like that. So that, they were just some ideas. I'll bring them up. We could talk to them on Thursday night at REC Board about some other ideas that people have with that. There will be a number of people interviewing for the REC Board this Thursday, if any council members are interested in coming up, to see who we're interviewing. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else for public discussion?
I just have a question for Mr. Leslie, if I could.
Go ahead, sir.
You suggesting, Charles, that the Borough have an ordinance requiring some sort of signage, I guess, on the exterior of a residence advising first responders then that there is in-home use of oxygen by one of the occupants?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you know of any other towns that have it that we can mirror it? I've never heard of it, but I would suggest that that's almost a little invasive. What about a master list for the fire department and police? I've never heard of it, but I, I would suggest, that, that's almost a little invasive. What about a master list for, for fire department and police? Possibly. Not everyone, not everyone's wanting, want to, you know, paint themselves.
Yeah, let me look at the pros and cons of it, Charles, I'll tell, I'll take a look at it and see, uh, yeah, it, it may be uh, something that uh, we would require, you know, some sort of uh, list that the fire company and the police and so forth would have, but we want to require residents to actually an exterior sign on their house and advise the public uh, personal uh, perhaps health issues, that may be a somewhat evasive, invasive and may uh, cause legal issues, so I have to give it some thought.
Okay, thank you. Someone's playing a loud TV. All right, is there anyone else for public discussion?
I was, I named myself unmuted.
Janice, do you have something else to add?
No, I thought that maybe if we could get a little sticker that says oxygen, put it on the front door and then it would protect our firefighters, because they're going into a situation not knowing, and that can be dangerous for them. I just thought it was a good idea and I just wanted to chime in.
It is a good, it is a good idea, I just thought that maybe a master list would serve the same purpose, you know, rather than some, some what, uh, their personal health problems this way, I don't.
The occupant is a different thing. It can cause explosions, I think, so.
It sure can. Thank you. Public discussion going once, going twice, second public discussion session is closed. Is there anything else from council or our officials? Lot of head shaking, no? All right, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn, please.
Make a motion.
Second?
A second.
Open every second.
I'll, I'll fall in favor. I'll see you guys in one week. Thank you, good night.
Good night.